Clerk, please call the rule.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Councilmember Mayo.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Sniper.
Here.
And Councilmember Grimes will be joining us in a little while. He'll be participating remotely. Robin, can we do something with this? Try it again? Okay, that's better. We're going to first do Ward Night and we're kicking off May with Ward Five Night and I'll turn to Councilmember Sniper.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to welcome everyone from Ward Five and everyone else as well, of course. I'm glad folks are showing up. This is an opportunity to talk to members of the council individually. It's also an opportunity for you to come up and ask questions or raise issues, urge the council to do things for Ward Five, put us on the map. No, that's not true. But seriously, it's your opportunity to ask any questions. We have a number of staff members here who can answer questions about particular issues, whether it's sidewalks, potholes, trash pickup, traffic, you know, anything else, whatever concerns you. Thank you.
Yes, I think we're ready to hear from Ward Five folks. And I'll just point out what we'd like to do is hear from Ward Five folks only in Ward Five Night. We're not going to use the timer or lights or anything else. We just want to have a little bit of dialogue with you. So if there's something that can be answered this evening, we'll do it. There are usually some limited number of department heads here. We're joined by Police Chief Rukucci and Public Works Director Daryl Braithwaite. We might also be joined by Housing and Community Development Director Sarah Dane. So with that, if you can identify yourself and go ahead.
My name is Olivia Leoa and I'm on the corner of Flower and Maplewood in Ward Five. I've been here twelve years. And I'm concerned by the level of traffic I see specifically at the corner of Piney Branch and Flower. There's two establishments in particular, the Manah and the Mahawal. On Fridays and Saturday nights, other nights of the week as well, but after a certain time of night, that place becomes like a bevy of activity of just men. And the other night, not the other night, about three or four months ago, I was bringing my son home from a hockey game and I said, "Gosh, look at all those guys. There's no women there." He said, "Well, why would there be, Mom? It's a strip club." And I went, "What?" And he said, "Yeah, so-and-so's father goes there and blah, blah, blah." So it's kind of, I thought, "Well, that's really interesting. I just, I don't know if that's the case. I'd like to get it checked out." But it is sus, to me, it's suspect when I drive by an establishment and all I see is men on a nightly basis. So it's a concern just because of, you know, what's happening, but also the amount of people. And the other question or concern I have is speeding on Flower Avenue. Once you get past the stop sign at Houston, once you get up to where my house is, I notice that people are going really fast. So if there's anything that could be done for the speeding, that would be great, too. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always good to know when there's a particular concern about speeding because the chief has the ability to assign the traffic officer to watch particular spots. Somebody else like to speak?
Don't be shy.
Hi, I'm Esther Siegel at 706 Erie Avenue. First, I just want to say that I thought it was very interesting that our mayor was curious about the speeding but not the strip club. So I don't know what's going on there. And our neighborhood's continued concern is that there isn't enough protection at Sligo and Houston. We have begged and pleaded and written letters to get a four-way stop sign there. Because as you may or may not know, Sligo Creek goes this way, Houston goes this way, but then there's a, I mean, Kennebec goes this way, but then there's that weird curve onto that other street, whatever that one is. And it is just awful and really, one day, we're going to be up here talking about the person who died at that corner. So it really would be helpful if you focused in on it and not just say, "Well, that belongs to the Park Service," but really focus on a very critically serious corners. And the other thing is, I wanted to know what you all did to drive Ruben to have to go to Rome.
Anybody else from Ward Five?
Hi, I'm Ann Hollander from 7904 Flower. I'm also the co-chair of the Washington Adventist Hospital Land Use Committee. I've given you guys a couple of updates on the work of that committee. One thing I wanted to have a call out tonight is that there's been a concern expressed on the committee that we increase the diversity on the committee. And so I would really encourage anybody who may know people in any of the wards that are interested in serving on that committee, particularly in Ward Five, because we're talking about Ward Five, to please step up and volunteer to join the committee. We could definitely use some more voices. Then, just in terms of the neighborhood, I think one thing I've noticed, and I might have made a comment a couple of years ago about this, but the opportunities for the kids at Rolling Terrace to participate in the activities, the recreational activities with the city are very limited. There's an after-care and before-care program run out of the community center that our kids don't have transportation to, to the best of my knowledge. It's not marketed to those kids. Fortunately, those kids have a very high-quality childcare in the school. But just to increase the opportunities for people that may find it preferable or more convenient or whatever, to take advantage of the city's services, I would encourage you to explore a way to get those kids involved directly with the city's recreation program. They are mainly Tacoma Park residents. Also, we're excited about the progress of the Green Street project. It's sorely needed. The street is really falling apart, and the sooner the better. One thing that some of our neighbors have expressed some concern about is some of the lax code enforcement going on in the particular pockets of the neighborhood. There was an auxiliary building, you're probably aware of the issue, that one of our neighbors really had to work very hard with both the city and the county to identify the problem and to have the legal construction pulled down. And he's informed me over the weekend that there's new activity taking place in the same area. It's the little retail area right at, I guess it's Erie and Flower. And that area is, you know, it's a small pocket of retail, but it really does need some attention because we've got a vacant storefront there for over a year at this point. And so luckily, we haven't had any major incidents there that I'm aware of. But I think the city could really devote some time and attention, not only to that little pocket, but I've started to notice that, you know, some of the other retail is really dog-eared in the city and could use some attention, some creative thinking about ways to improve the commercial corridors in Ward Five and beyond. So I'd also like to say that I've noticed a marked improvement in the Department of Public Works activities in our neighborhood. I think it was much better this year, and I've been critical of their work in prior years, especially with maintenance on Flower Avenue. The leaf removal situation was much better this year, although I think there's still room for improvement. I definitely want to give credit where it's due. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Other Ward Five residents?
I'm Erica Wood Scott. I am a condo owner on Erie Avenue in Ward Five, and I'm happy to be here today. I'm also working with the senior services, I guess cohort of people coming together to plan senior programming for seniors here. And I'm a gerontologist by training, and I'm excited to say that I'm launching or having a Senior Solutions Fair on May 19th and 18th here. I just wanted to make the committee aware of it. I brought you all to the event. It'll be here at the community center. And just want to commend the city for already forward-thinking about how we could bring a village concept here to Tacoma Park, and I look forward to being a part of that growth.
What was the fair again that you were in?
It's the Senior Solutions and Community Resource Fair. And I have flyers here if you would like. I'll just give it to you.
We have them.
Oh, good, yes. And just to make you all aware. So thank you.
Thanks.
Wally Malikoff, AD 22, Maple Avenue. I just want to put in a good word for the, I don't know what department it is, but the department that picks up the trash.
Public Works.
The Public Works. They do a fantastic job, so someone should, I don't know who's in charge of that, but someone should pass it on.
Right there.
Oh, they do a great job, and I'm very impressed. They do a better job than the Washington Post does in delivering the paper. So when the public sector can outperform the private sector, I think we should be happy about that.
I want to thank everyone for coming and talking, even those who didn't. That's fine, too. Nobody asked for an update on the Flower Avenue Green Street project, but I will go ahead and receive some information about it. The city has received nine proposals from engineering design firms. The proposals are being reviewed now. We believe the large number of proposals reflects excitement about the project. We hope to come to council on Monday, May 21st with a recommendation to the council to select a firm. The one caveat on this is that the city cannot sign a contract with a firm until we have a written agreement with State Highway on the Flower Avenue swap, you know, the swap so that we will be given the money that State Highway would use to repave the street, and we're going to use that for the Green Street project. So until we have a written agreement, we can't really move forward with the Flower Avenue project, unfortunately. There is a new State Highway attorney who just took over, so things have slowed down a bit because of that. And the city is working on pushing that along. So I'm hoping we'll have some news on that fairly soon. Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank all the Ward Five residents for coming, and it was good to have an opportunity to talk with everybody, both at the reception beforehand and to hear from you and hear about your concerns. And I hope that you'll spread the word to fellow Ward Five residents that we want to continue having Ward Nights every year and that it's a good opportunity to come down and find out what's going on and share your concerns. So again, thank you. And we will move to the regular part of our meeting. I think we'll just do some of the short beginning stuff and then maybe take a short break before we get into the budget work session. But I do want to point out that we're going to change the order a little bit of the published agenda. We're going to move up the special session. All of these items concern the police department, and the chief would appreciate it, I know, if we moved his items up so he didn't have to stay the whole evening but could go home a little earlier. So we'll move those up. And then I'll just point out a couple of upcoming agenda items on future meetings. Next Monday, May 14th, we will be taking up first reading ordinances adopting the budget and the tax rates. And second reading will be the following Monday, the 21st. But the other thing that the council will be doing next week, Wednesday, May 16th, is we will be touring Tacoma Junction, and that's from 6:30 to 8:30 in the junction. And the following week, on Thursday, May 24th, the city council will be having a tree canopy tour, again, from 6:30 to 8:30. Of particular interest to Ward Five residents might be our meeting on Tuesday, May 29th. Since Monday, May 28th is Memorial Day, and the city will be closed for the federal holiday. At our meeting on Tuesday, May 29th, we will be having a farewell reception for Ward Five City Councilmember Ruben Sniper, and that's from 7:00 to 7:30. So you get to kind of have two receptions in there. And then the following Monday, June 4th, will be Ward Four Night with a reception at 7:00 o'clock and Ward Four Night at 7:30 at the beginning of the council meeting. So that's upcoming items for the next month. I also want to note that I have a couple of proclamations. There are actually three proclamations this evening. There are only two listed on the agenda. Note the first one on the agenda and then the third one, the new one, and then I'll go back to the second one. So the first one is a proclamation that I issued, I don't know, was it a week or two ago, for recognizing Dr. George Cohen, who's a co-founder of Mobile Medical Care. And there was a reception and a program honoring him, and I was happy to provide a proclamation that was presented to him at that reception. Then the one that is a latecomer to the agenda is the proclamation recognizing National Bike to School Day, which is this week, May 9th. And that's recognizing events that are going to be taking place here in Tacoma Park in honor of that national day. And then the final proclamation is one recognizing Older Americans Month that was mentioned a few minutes ago, and you, members of the council have the information that was provided along with this. And then I have the proclamation. And Ms. Wood Scott, who lives in Ward Five on Erie Avenue, was the one who brought it to my attention that this month is Older Americans Month. So if you want to come up, I'll give you a copy of this proclamation. And I'll just note that the city has, according to the census, 2,625 residents aged 60 or older. And this is really important, affects to recognizing men. And I wanted to thank you for bringing it to our attention and make sure that we do that. So here's this. Thank you. And now we'll go to public comment period, and this is the opportunity for anybody who isn't in Ward Five to make the usual public comments. And we'll go back to the usual format with the timer and lights in three minutes. And Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, official police delegate. And I want to tell everybody, I'm glad to see Ward Five Night, but I wish there was a lot more participation. But in the last several weeks, we've had a lot of public participation in the public speak-out, in the public comment period. We've had a lot of public speak-out, and that really makes me feel good. It's one of the things I've been working on and trying to point out. We need more public participation in our city council if we're going to get anywhere. Because everybody says one man cannot make a difference. Well, I've noticed that throughout my activities and stuff, I have made a difference. I have gotten people fired up to do something. I have gotten, I've gotten issues I brought before the council and had them dealt with. And that's what we need. We need public participation, not just people sitting home watching it on the TV set saying, "Oh, I saw him on TV." That's not what it's all about. What it's about is making a positive change in your city, making your city, your community, and your world a better place than it was when you first got it. And Mr. Sniper, you are going to be missed. I'm sorry to see that there wasn't as many people on Ward Four Night. I was expecting to see a packed room. I was hoping to see a packed room tonight on Ward Five Night. Ward Five should have been totally packed. And I'm hoping next month, Ward Four will be totally packed. I'm hoping we get a lot of people from the Franklin down here, a lot of people from other senior disabled housing down here, and other people throughout the ward and throughout the city to come down here on Ward Four Night, come to our reception. We ought to have a good time down here, please. Public participation, that's what we need. And I want to tell everybody that I'm looking forward to a reception for Mr. Sniper before he leaves to go to Rome. He's going to do as the Romans do, and we're going to do as Tacoma Parkers do. And I'm hoping by God that we get another one who is just as good as Mr. Sniper, but I know we're not going to get anyone better. I mean, I've seen Mr. Sniper work in these meetings many, many times in a row. He is far outstanding. We need more public participation in the special election. We need everybody to get out and vote in Ward Five. Please, come out, everybody in Ward Five, and vote. I wish there was a lot more public participation tonight. And I'm hoping that in the following weeks, there will be more public participation again. And don't forget, I'd like to see if the council can put out voter registration kits and all the major city events, including the Ward Nights. I'd love to be able to see that or know about it, even though I can't see. But as I said, please, come out on Ward Four Night. You can't miss a good time. Don't give it up. It doesn't cost anything. It's a good time for all, and you can educate yourself, and also you can educate your city council on issues that need to be addressed. So please, Ward Four, I expect to see you out there. Please, if you care about me, like everybody says, all I want to be able to do is things to make it easier for you, come out on Ward Four Night. Pack this room. Pack it tight. Pack it tight, so that way we can show the people that Ward Four does care.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dan Seligman. I'm a Tacoma Park resident for half a dozen years, live at 1827, that was my old address, 7327 Carroll Avenue. And I just wanted to very, very briefly commend the council, the city manager, for the work that's gone on so far respecting the implementation of the Tacoma Park Junction Task Force recommendations on redevelopment of the junction. I know there's a long way to go, but we've made a good beginning in the consideration of set of resolutions and so forth, not to mention Councilmember Mayo sharpening questions at our original presentation. I think those went far to move the conversation forward. Did I say congressman? I meant councilman. But I do want to just flag one minor issue that's come to my attention, which is, I understand perhaps in the interests of fiscal prudence, there's an effort to pay down some debt a little bit early, I think on this building, that may have the inadvertent unintended effect of crowding out funding that might be moving forward priority public projects, such as redevelopment and advancement of the junction. And so, you know, I understand you have complex responsibilities in terms of the fiscal state of the city, but I also think that there are critical investment priorities we need to keep our eyes focused on and build our sense of community and the vitality economically of this community as well. And so, striking the appropriate balance, I hope that we remember that we shouldn't be crowding out these future investments just to hunker down and play it a little safer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we will move along to council comments. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that Ritchie Citizens Association is having a special meeting on Thursday at 7:30 at Hefner Park to discuss the traffic calming measures that Public Works is planning for Ritchie Avenue. Thank you.
I may have just pushed a button under here. I don't know. We'll find out.
Or not.
Councilmember Sniper.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't exactly what the button does. I'm a little concerned.
Well, we'll find out.
We will find out. I want to again thank Ward Five for coming out and showing support for our wards. Great ward. There's a lot of really good people there. And I also want to thank the folks who have indicated that they are interested in running for the Ward Five council member seat for coming also. Shout out to them. I know how tough it is to go pound the pavement and introduce yourself to folks and, you know, try to convince them. So I am very pleased to know that there are at least three people running that I know about or going to run, and I'm glad to see them here. The nice thing about coming to council is that's an easy way to answer two questions. One, could you actually stand sitting up here and for, you know, hours on end? That's one very important question. And the other is, you get to learn a lot about the issues. It's kind of an easy way to find out what the council does and what the hot issues are. So I applaud you for coming. I do want to, I thought the mayor was going to talk a little bit more about the Senior Solutions Fair agenda on May 18th and 19th, Friday and Saturday nights. An opportunity to come there for a little combination fun and information. I hope you'll take a look at the flyer that Ms. Woods handed out because it has both movies, talks, interesting people. We're going to have some really cool older athletes as well, and many of us are starting to resemble those older athletes, so we'll be interested in seeing it. So I hope folks can come to that. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. And also, thank you, Ward Five, for being here tonight. It's always great to have the city residents come to council meetings. I really appreciate that you're here. So with that said, I got a lot of gold stars, and it's really hard to know where to begin. This past Saturday, a mighty band of volunteers met in the police parking lot and over at the garden at the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center and cleaned up and planted two gardens. Huge gold stars go to Vanita Meyer, president of the Piney Branch Elementary School PTA, her two children, Noah and Maxwell. Maxwell had a fabulous hat with a little helicopter on it, and if his head had been a bit larger, he might not have gotten to go home with it, but it was a little head, so I left it be. Ann and Abby Milliken, Ann Mosher, that's Annie Mosher, Matt Kelly, Cindy DiBalla, Shawanda Oliver, Todd and Shelley Levitt, they're a dad and daughter team. Plus, whooping gold stars, and I mean whooping gold stars, to Harry Cohn, who spent the entire weekend schlepping garden equipment on Saturday and house and garden tour setups on Sunday. The garden in the police parking lot is The garden in the police parking lot is planted and rocking along, soon to have yummy veggies for the taking, and the one at the recreation center is cleared and ready for planting. And I think this time, I think it may be nepotism, real pure nepotism, but I may get a little gold star too, because I was there in all of it. So, that was Saturday. Sunday morning, Safe Roads to School 5K Challenge. Wow, what a group. First, there were the runners. Us walkers had to wait forever for the runners to run through, and they got started, oh, by the way, by a very, very special starting person. That would be Mayor Bruce Williams. And then, there were the walkers, my kind of people, not as many, but very vibrant and committed. Or maybe they should have been committed, I'm not sure about that. But what was most special about the whole affair was me trying to finish the walk and to be met by a major band. It had to be 150 kids, all in chartreuse t-shirts, running down Maple Avenue right at me. And it was, I guess it was the fun run. What a group. And I knew a bunch of them, they all waved when they went by. It got my energy up. I was thinking about just climbing up Sherman Hill and not going to the finish line, but because they ran past me, I went on and did the finish. My time was 1 hour, 12 minutes, and 24 seconds. This is my third year in a row, I came in totally last, but I talked to a lot of people along the way. I chatted with everybody that, you know, that I knew. So, huge gold stars to Lucy Neer and a host of magnificent volunteers who were able to handle over 700 entrants, plus two, for every one of those kids, each one of them had two parents hanging out. So, also, huge gold stars to Tim Mail and his kids, because I challenged them to beat me, and oh, by the way, they did, in huge, 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 in a huge way. They were running the second race when I was just crossing the finish line. So, that's Sunday morning. How about Sunday afternoon? Many, many, many more gold stars to Historic Tacoma's House and Garden Tour. I don't know how many of you all really know about this. This is 39th year. It was started by a group of people in 1973. One of them was my mom, and it's gone on, I think, every year for 39. Next year will be the 40th. It was back in the day when Tacoma Park got really proud of who we were and decided to shell us off to the rest of the community. All my comments actually come from the refreshment stand, because I, starting in 1973, I was pouring punch and handing cookies to people, and went on for many years doing that, because when you're Opal Daniels' daughter, no matter how old you were, you did what Opal Daniels said to do. So, punch and cookies is what was, is my bailiwick. There were probably over, I didn't mention in the Safe Roads, did I say 700 participants? Plus, there were 700 there. Close to 500 participants at the House and Garden Tour, and that was in Ward One in North Tacoma. All I heard were huge compliments from everyone who went through, and I'd like to say that was all of Tacoma Park patting ourselves on the back. It wasn't. It was people from all over the community. I'd say maybe 70% were from outside of Tacoma Park and about 30% were from inside. So, it was pretty exciting to see all the people talking about what an activist community is and how beautiful the homes are and how interesting everything was. Let's see, gold stars to Historic Tacoma, who are all volunteers and are looking to, they're also looking to do a soft, all right, everybody's sitting down for this, they're looking to do a soft opening of their facility in the junction in June, and that would be next month. That's not the hard opening, but that's the very soft opening. This is a truly exciting moment for everybody around here. So, there's more gold stars. Ward Three for really piling on about the possibility of extending Sunday hours. I got to say, yikes. I have never gotten so many emails about any issue since I've been a council member or even as president of the Citizens Association. Everyone asking the council to go forward with extending the hours on Sunday. So, asking everyone to keep the emails coming in, whether it's pro or con, keep on weighing in on all those kinds of issues. Finally, and I know everyone's going, "Thank God," save the date. The council will be a captive audience on May 16th for two hours at the junction. Take a tour, find out a little bit about the history of the junction, and all you Ward Fivers who are here tonight, come on down, 6:30 to 8:30, and just find out about, it's a pretty old, old commercial district, like from the 20s. So, it should be a real fun tour, learn a little bit of history about all the stores. And with that, I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Schultz.
I just wanted to, with regard to the special election for the council seat for the fifth ward, to remind any candidates or would-be, people are just thinking about, to take advantage of the opportunity to speak to any of us who are already on the city council. Certainly customary to do that, just to share ideas, ask questions, whatever you want to do. I welcome it, and I probably might, can say the same for my colleagues, to help you kind of think, get yourself ready for the election process. That's all I wanted to say.
And I'll just add real quick that in addition to the TKPK 5K yesterday and the House and Garden Tour, there was also another event, and I'm not coming up with the exact right name of it, but it's the Boy Scouts Do the Derby, where they run the vehicles down the hill.
They may have done that.
The Soapbox Derby.
The Soapbox Derby?
Soapbox Derby.
Because they gave out all their mulch on Saturday morning. They may have done that earlier, because they used the mulch, I think, to bounce the cars off. I'm not sure.
I think they did it yesterday.
Okay. Never mind.
I have some information. I talked to the scout leader.
Yes.
Lenar.
Yes, Dave Lenar.
He said they gave, they sold 2,000 bags over the weekend, 50 of the scouts doing that. I was one of their customers. So, and they make some money, and then they turn it all around and use that money for scholarships for summer camp.
I was a customer, too.
So, there were a number of events going on yesterday. Everybody likes the first weekend in May. Councilmember Siemens.
Mayor Williams, if I can just have a little side conversation with Kay. I just want to let her know that my daughter did the Avon Walk for Breast Cancer this weekend, and they did 26 miles the first day and 13 miles the second day.
Impressive. Listen, three and a half is about it for me. I'm really impressed with those.
I was trying to, I was going to suggest that maybe she could give you some pointers for getting ready for next year's Avon Walk.
Oh, that's brutal.
And I know that Councilmember Grimes has been listening in, and I want to give him a chance to say anything if he wants to.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Yes, I've been in since the start. I had a lot of problems, but I don't have any comments. Thank you for that.
Good, thanks. City manager, any comments?
I thought it might be helpful while we have Ward Five residents here, the city clerk could just talk briefly about the special election for the Ward Five seat.
Sure, I'd be happy to announce some of the important dates for people to keep in mind and to share with other residents of Ward Five. The voter registration deadline for this election is Monday, June 18th. So, first of all, it's important that people be registered to vote by that date. The petition deadline, and I know the candidates are aware of this, but in case anyone else is interested in running, the deadline for turning in petitions is Wednesday, June 27th. The election itself is Tuesday, July 17th. It will be held at Wilkinson Hall in, at Washington Adventist University. And the new council member will be sworn in on Monday, July 30th. And let's see, if anyone has any questions about the election or about running for office, don't hesitate to contact me at my office. And, let's see, I had one more thought, and I've now lost it, but, oh, I know, we will be doing a mailing to everyone in the ward, so there'll be ample opportunity. There'll be two mailings, one to let people know about the upcoming election, and then a sample ballot will be mailed out. So, we'll make every effort to get the vote out and hope that the residents of the ward will do so as well. Thanks.
One follow-up question, will there be absentee ballots or other early voting provisions?
Absolutely. Absentee ballots, yes, there'll be the usual process for that. And early voting, I haven't quite sorted out what we'll do in terms of early voting, but we have a no-fault absentee system, so that anyone can vote by absentee ballot. So, there's no, should be no impediment to voting if you can't be there on the day of the election or choose not to be there that day.
Okay, thank you.
Just one other item. As I've mentioned in prior reports, we've been spending considerable time over the past couple months working on the municipal tax duplication payment for police services. I wanted to share with the council that we found out last Friday that the county council's agenda for tomorrow does include the GO Committee's recommendation on the city's request for an additional $623,000 in this payment. When I had submitted that to the staff person for the GO Committee, I had broken it into, or asked it to be broken into three parts, a quarter, a quarter and a half, which is to provide some flexibility in case the county council was uncomfortable with the $623,000. This is part of the budget consent agenda before the county council tomorrow. I will be attending their meeting, just in case it does get pulled off the consent agenda, so I could respond to any questions. The final county council decision on reconciliation list items is scheduled for Thursday, May 17th, so that will actually be the date where we know whether or not we got any additional funding from this source. So, I'll keep you posted, send you an email tomorrow after the meeting and let you know how it goes.
And it's on the consent agenda as the three pieces?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the city manager?
Does that mean, if it's on the agenda, on the three pieces, they could reject one or two of the pieces, or?
They could.
Do anything they wanted to?
They could do anything they wanted to. Typically, since it is on the consent agenda, which quite frankly, we had to check a little bit Friday, because we were a little surprised that it was actually placed on the consent agenda, given the total dollar amount. Our hope is that it stays on the consent agenda, but it could, no, usually if they can pass that hurdle, we should be in reasonably good shape. Obviously, one of the question marks for both us and for the county is what happens at the state level with the budget. But it could go either way.
Okay.
Councilmember Schultz.
My question is, is that if it passes, obviously, even if it passes, it's contingent on the general assembly's budget, is it not?
I think the county council will probably go ahead, Councilmember Schultz, and I'm just guessing, and will have to go ahead and adopt their budget. Certainly, just as we've had to adjust to changes at the state level, I assume the county could as well, depending on the outcome of that.
Right. Well, then, let's assume that it all goes well. Does that mean that there could be additional funds that you have not accounted for or presumed in the draft recommendations that you've given us?
That's correct. You know, leading up to my submission of my budget, certainly I spent considerable time in contact with county council members and their staffs regarding this issue, but it was speculative. I was hopeful, and it's still speculative at this point in time.
That's understood.
And the timing is that if the county council is trying to have their budget reconciled by May 17th, the state legislature's scheduled to meet the 14th, 15th, and 16th.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Thank you. We will proceed to the three special session items, which should go fairly quickly, and then we'll take a break, and we'll come back for the Budget Work Session Reconciliation. So, we'll move to Agenda Item Three, which is a first reading ordinance awarding a contract for executive search services for the selection of a new police chief.
Well, this is one of those items that I kind of bring forward with a heavy heart. Obviously, our police chief will be leaving us at the end of July. As I have mentioned to the council previously, I would like to use the services of an executive search firm to assist me with the recruitment of our next police chief. In early April, I did issue a request for proposal for executive search firm services that RFP was sent to nine firms, and in response, I received five proposals. Certainly, all five firms are qualified. The prices, as I noted on the agenda cover sheet, range from a low of a not-to-exceed price of $19,500 to a high of $35,000. I am recommending this evening that we accept the proposal of the Mercer Group Incorporated. Some of you on the council are familiar with the firm. They were actually the firm that assisted the city with hiring me back in.
Must be good.
I like to think so, Councilmember Siemens. You're a better judge of that than me. And they were also the firm that I used in 2006 to actually hire Chief Rakuci. They just happened to be the lowest bidder. That was not the primary consideration in my mind, but just, they have done, obviously, good work, I think, for the city of Tacoma Park in the past, and they have a fairly extensive history of doing police search services for a wide range of cities. And I think because they've done searches across the country, I think they would have access to a good pool of candidates, which was one of my primary reasons for thinking we should use a search firm.
Questions from the council? Does somebody want to move this?
Move.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Snipper, second by Councilmember Siemens. Any council discussion? Any public comments? Okay, this is a first reading ordinance. Since we have Councilmember Grimes participating on the phone, we will do roll call votes, so we'll, clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mail.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Okay, that passes a first reading. We will move along to a single reading ordinance authorizing city manager to sign an amended agreement with Xerox for the placement of two additional speed cameras.
The council's very familiar with the issues. I'll be very brief. My proposed budget, as you know, recommended the installation of two additional speed cameras on Carroll Avenue. The ordinance that is before the council this evening would basically authorize me to sign an amendment to the existing contract for the placement of those cameras. Included in the agenda cover sheet is some information about past history of speeding and traffic collisions along this roadway. We did have some speed surveys done by our speed camera vendor, and the results of that are also reflected in the agenda cover sheet. During a, essentially, one-week period back in February, they were noting about 2,300 violations during that period of time, and a violation was measured by the standards for a speed camera citation, which is 12 miles or more over the posted speed limit. So, this is certainly an area from the staff's perspective that warrants the use of speed cameras. If there's any more detailed questions about this, Chief Rakuci is in the audience.
Councilmember Siemens.
I know that you mentioned the inclusion of this in the budget. I assume you're talking about the expense of putting this in, because we're not doing these to gain revenue. That is certainly something that happens, but the fact that people are speeding down through there doesn't, isn't necessarily indicative that there's a problem. Another measurement is accident rate in that area. Do we have any statistics on that?
Yeah, I don't, Chief Rakuci, you have to help me out here. There have been documented histories of traffic collisions.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, I'm sorry, forty-eight reported collisions since December of 2010.
Okay, thank you.
And I can add that it's of great concern for people trying to cross the street there. They always, they've been saying for, oh, 10 years at least, that they were looking for something to slow people down, that it was very dangerous to cross the street to get to or from the bus stops along there. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. Three comments and questions. The first is, I know we had talked about the nuclear weapons connection issue with Xerox, and I don't remember how we resolved that, whether we're still moving forward to try to figure out some answer on that question?
That issue, Councilmember Mail, was addressed in the Special Considerations Section. I can certainly note that for the record, as I had mentioned previously, Xerox was listed on the 2004 Nuclear Free America list that was adopted by the city council. There was an indication, which I think we had shared previously, that its inclusion was in error. We did refer this matter to the Nuclear Free Committee, and they indicated that they had no objection to the award of this contract.
Thank you. My second comment is that, I guess, following an earlier discussion that we had about this issue, a constituent mentioned to me that they weren't aware of any speed limit signs on that stretch, so from the moment you turn at the junction onto Carroll, or I think it was from the hospital. it was from the hospital down toward the junction, that there weren't any posted signs.
Okay.
So I don't know that that's the case, did not confirm it, but presumably, before we put cameras in, we would want some sort of signage. And then my third comment is, I know that previous councils have discussed this, but the total cost of the contract for the services is clearly expensive. I did a little bit of research myself, and it's clearly not out of line with what everyone else around the country pays for these services. But at some point in the future, I think it just might be good for us to have a discussion, a work session discussion about that, and if only for my own edification.
Chief.
Before, I believe there are signs there, because we write out quite a few tickets there, but before we will put the cameras up, there will be signs with photo enforcement on them, so that anyone coming south or north will know when they enter that zone that there are speed cameras set up, and that's required by law, and we will be doing that.
Thank you.
And I know there were signs there, maybe that they got knocked down. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yeah, this particular part of Carroll Avenue, during the campaign, the people that live on the surrounding blocks were pleading for some form of traffic calming. We talked about four-way stop signs at Lincoln and Carroll. We talked about a traffic light. This may be, you know, to actually slow people down, the best method of doing that, especially with signs that say "photo enforced." And I think this weekend, there was a report that Montgomery County is moving their speed cameras about the county and not telling people where they are, and they're doing it a lot. So I think the chief had spoken about moving these, not just putting them right at Lincoln and Carroll, but moving them up and down the whole stretch. It's not just the people going down Carroll that are speeding, it's people coming up the hill that are really hitting it. So I'm surprised there are not more incidents than just the 48. So this is, I think, a good thing.
And I'll just add that concerns about what to do about that particular area go back at least to the SS Carroll traffic study, and I'm going to say that was in the mid-'90s. And there were investigations of what to do at that point, so this is going on 15, maybe 20 years, that people have been looking for a good solution there. So I think this is really going to address some problems. I don't see any further council comment, any public comment? Okay, this is a single reading ordinance, clerk, let me just double-check. Councilmember Grimes, anything on this one?
No comment.
Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mail.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. The final item before we take a break is a resolution recognizing National Police Week May 13th to 19th, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15th. Would somebody like to move that resolution?
Move.
Move by Councilmember Snipper, second by Councilmember Schultz. Any council comments? Any public comments? All those in favor, well, it's a resolution, call roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Aye.
Councilmember Mail.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, and we will take a short break. So, we spent a good deal of time last week going over reconciliation items. The city manager and also Housing and Community Development Director, Daines, put in a fair amount of work between Thursday night and today to try and make some sense out of, in particular, the Tacoma Junction items. The city manager has provided us with the, basically, the reconciliation charts. The finance director is with us and will be able to answer any question that we have on a very short turnaround. She'll know all the answers.
Did you know that you could?
And the city clerk will be ready to keep track of it all. So, would the city manager like to get us started?
Sure, I'll just make some very brief comments. As the council is aware, you're scheduled to have first reading of the FY13 budget next Monday, so it's critical that we get some final direction tonight in terms of what modifications you'd like to make to the budget I submitted to you in early April. In the original agenda cover packet, we redistributed some of the staff-directed, staff-identified reconciliation items. So the list that was distributed by email today are those items that are kind of directed by the council or under consideration by the council, but they do not represent the likely total change to my original budget. The changes that we had identified and shared with you, I guess it was last Thursday, are fairly modest. The majority of them relate to, some issues related to the program open space funding. And the only other items that I just wanted to call out were the assumed addition of the second crossing guard for Tacoma Junction, which is accounted for in the speed camera fund. And there is additional funding for the Public Works Department to do the lighting for the pedestrian bridge in front of the community center. What we had distributed in the salmon sheet, as the mayor alluded to, is a proposed work plan for Tacoma Junction for fiscal year 13, and my guess is there will probably be some discussion of that this evening. And there also, as far as I could, best as I could track, were the other items that the council had talked about and seemed to be still in play at the conclusion of Thursday night's council meeting. Hopefully, I didn't miss anything, but what I've tried to do is to kind of interpret what I thought your direction was, or at least the items that you were still considering. On the general fund revenues, there had been a suggestion made that we increase the rate for personal property and railroad and public utilities. As I understood the direction, and Yvonne and I talked about this, the council's goal for personal property was to try to reach a figure that represented actual revenues or projected revenues for FY12, so that revenue source would stay relatively even. And for railroad and public utilities, essentially, to establish a rate that would result in revenue generation equivalent to the highest point that we had shown on that chart. The numbers are slightly different if you look at it, because we were trying not to get into any further half cents, but I think they're relatively close to the goal that the council had set. Certainly, if there is a desire to set some other tax rate or to generate a different level of revenue, Yvonne and I could do those calculations relatively quickly. On the general fund expenditures, it's sort of a laundry list of items that were discussed. And as I mentioned, it was my impression, were still under consideration by the council at the conclusion of Thursday night's work session. You'll see that there is a low-cost figure and a high-cost figure. This is just to reflect a range for certain items of cost, and it obviously depends on what the council decides this evening. As far as the council-directed reconciliation items, the only ones that I'm aware of were those that impacted the general fund. There did not appear to be any expressed interest on the part of the council of making any modifications to the Stormwater Fund, the Speed Camera Fund, or the Special Revenue Funds. The one item that you may have noticed when I sent this out this afternoon that is not included has to do with the proposed reservation of funds for the partial early redemption of the 2005 community center bond. That's not because I didn't recognize it was still in play, but technically, that does not affect the FY13 budget per se. It's not an expenditure, it's not a revenue. It is an allocation of fund balance that would be shown as part of the adopted budget ordinance language, but that is why it was not on the reconciliation sheets. But I certainly recognize that that's an issue that the council has talked about and will probably talk about this evening as well. One new item, and I apologize for kind of throwing a curve at the last minute, but I figured while you were talking about allocating funds, I'd put in a pitch to perhaps get some modest allocation of funding to provide some support to Jesse and to the city clerk's office in general. As you all know, they try to handle a tremendous volume of paper, and I think Jesse has indicated that she could use some help. Just with filing and scanning of records, what I would envision is a 15-hour-a-week position that basically would provide some staff support to Jesse. Total cost of that is about $15,000. So as the council has its discussion this evening, I would appreciate if there could be some consideration of that request, and I do apologize that I didn't include it earlier in the process.
And so that would just be a part-time without benefits?
That's correct. Fifteen hours a week, it would not be covered by the bargaining agreement, and it would not, other than workers' compensation and certainly FICA and Medicare. And with that, we're really here to basically answer any questions you may have and try to facilitate the council's discussion this evening.
Okay, what I'd like to do first is double-check and make sure that, see if we have any questions about the part that was included in the original blue-covered packet item, which is the various pieces that the city manager was explaining, were staff-generated or were kind of put in there as basically non-controversial, like the lighting, the lighting at the front of the building that were items that had been generated earlier in the process. I want to make sure and see if we have any questions on those first. And I'll check with Councilmember Grimes and see if you have anything on these.
No, thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
He said no.
You said no, okay.
Sorry, you're on mute most of the time. I might not have got.
Okay, anybody have any questions on those? So those are settled. Okay, let's put those aside. Are there any additional ones that anybody missed that you feel should be on the salmon sheet reconciliation items? Or any corrections that were, where something is on here, but it wasn't understood correctly, it's the wrong number, it doesn't meet the expectations, any of those kind of questions? Councilmember Grimes, anything there?
No.
Okay. So I think then what we're looking at is the information that was provided with the salmon cover sheet, which is the, hopefully encompasses the conversation that we had last week, and we could go through them, we could take, we could take item by item, we could take if anybody wants to make any kind of overall proposal or way of looking at things. I'd consider that first, just to kind of, some general comments without particular numbers, but a way of thinking about it. Would that be helpful? Councilmembers, Daniels Cohen, did you have that?
I had a question.
Question, okay, let's do the question, okay.
A before question, because, and it may be a silly question, because it may be in here and I just am not seeing it, but sidewalks, we talked about sidewalks for Pinecrest and the totlot in Pinecrest. It's not-
Right, my understanding for both the ADA sidewalk retrofit work, based on the council's conversation, is you were comfortable with the $600,000 allocation, which was already included in the budget. And on that specific item, there seemed to be interest on the part of the council of moving forward with Carroll Avenue. But basically, it's a matter of how the funds are used, but it doesn't change the bottom-line budget allocation, because that funding's there. Similarly, my understanding, and certainly the council can correct me if I am in error, but there seemed to be a comfort level with the $400,000 that was allocated for traffic calming and new sidewalks. That funding is also already in the budget, and the Pinecrest sidewalks are already in the queue. They have started that process.
And how about the totlot that we talked about? I know that's a negotiation, I think, with Montgomery County Park and Planning Commission.
My suggestion, Councilmember Daniels Cohen, is because staff has not yet had an opportunity to talk to Park and Planning, is that at this point in the budget process, that project not be included in the Special Revenue Fund. That's where we would basically fund the design with program open space funds until we have a further, a more firm arrangement with Park and Planning. If we are able to achieve that, that issue could be addressed when the program open space project resolution comes before the council, which I believe is in June. Sound great?
Program, okay.
Yeah, there'll be a resolution that the council will need to adopt, modifying the program open space plan, since we're not going to proceed with the field work at Ziegler Park, and we're adding certain projects. Certainly, if we can work out an arrangement with Park and Planning by that time, we could certainly include the design work for the totlot in that resolution and then simply modify the budget after its adoption. So it's not a closed door.
Okay.
I just think we need to, my recommendation at least, would be that we have something more firmly in hand before we include it in the budget.
And that would be something that the staff would do with Park and Planning, that I should leave the Park and Planning people alone, right?
Right, Suzanne, I believe, is going to, she may have already done it. We did not talk about it today. I know it's a Friday she had not, but I had asked her to call Mary Bradford at Park and Planning and to initiate those discussions, and certainly, we'll keep you apprised of how that's going.
She and I are in communication about Opal Daniels Park, which wasn't even part of this.
That's correct.
It's a different, whole different deal. Okay, all right.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, when we were talking about Tacoma Junction, the mayor had prioritized some of the items, and I had suggested that I would be supportive of things, but I didn't want to get to the threshold where it would require an additional staff person at $80,000. I wondered if that's somewhat reflected in this documentation?
Not really, but I think we can answer the question. I'm going to look to Sarah. I believe the interim programming, which we envisioned to be done under some type of contractual arrangement, which is a relatively small piece of the pie, it's only $5,000, would certainly pose no problem from a workload standpoint. Is that correct, Sarah? The other items, and certainly I have recognized, Councilmember Siemens, there may be some debate about some of these, likely will require some level of staff support. Sarah, please feel free to jump in, it's your department, but-
With the exception of the interim Tacoma Junction programming, because much of the activities that were proposed for the Tacoma Junction are above and beyond what we're doing now, their new programming, they would involve some level of additional staff support for them. If the council were to elect to proceed with the recommendations from the Tacoma Junction Task Force, we would have to, but not add any additional staff. We would have to reduce staffing, we would have to pull staff from programs that we're currently offering or administering.
Okay. Would that also include the ADA improvements along Carroll Avenue?
The ADA improvements are part of the Public Works budget and are separate from this.
It was one of those priorities that we listed last week, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, my, that would not fall under Sarah's purview, and there is money in staff capacity, provided that we stay within the $600,000 allocation.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Okay, Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, I'm asking for reassurance, that's the question. Last year, we put in money for a sustainability coordinator, and it turned out to have trouble getting that done. So the question is, are there items on here for which we might have a similar, might have a similar problem? Now, you've identified those where additional staffing resources are needed, and clearly- Now, you've identified those where additional staffing resources are needed, and clearly the council needs to, you know, sign off on that because clearly that won't happen without the additional staff resources. But are there others that you think might bump into similar kind of a problem?
I think that your question is very similar to the question posed by Councilmember Mail of the Public Works Director, which is basically with the, you know, I think some of the items on this reconciliation list related to public works are not that significant. So Daryl's comment, I'll just repeat it for the benefit of the council, is that as long as the council work plan focuses on essentially what was in my proposed budget, and there's a few minor items here, and with the new position, the full-time special projects coordinator, she felt it could be accommodated, that all the work that is envisioned could be done. I think the, I guess the caution to the council is as we go forward, assuming you kind of adopt this work plan, is that you be respectful of it and that she not have any curves thrown at her. I guess that's the only caveat.
Okay. Thank you.
I know Councilmember Grimes wants to comment on Tacoma Junction items. I want to make sure that we have covered any questions, kind of preliminaries, overall, kind of going at this before we kind of get into Junction-focused or any of these other items. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to suggest, just you had asked about process, and we have, we have two revenue changes that are under discussion, and we might talk about those as a block. We might talk about the Junction-related activities as a block, and then the remainder as a block. And that's a sort of fairly simple way to break it up. And I imagine, well, I don't know how long any discussions will be, but that's at least a subdivision.
I think that's a good idea about looking at the two revenue pieces first because I think that'll be fairly simple and we can get that out of the way. So maybe if we just jump to the revenues for a minute, do people feel that that reflects what we were talking about last week? I'm assuming it does. Councilmember Mail, it was your proposal?
Yes. Yes, it does.
Anybody have any objections to those changes, which would total increasing revenues by $33,576?
My...
Councilmember Grimes?
Yeah?
You say you're fine?
No. Okay. This is, my preference would be not to increase the personal property tax over the current budget amount, not to increase it.
Other thoughts from other councilmembers?
Did you have any persuasive arguments for people to support your position?
Simply that I like the linkage with the real property tax. Okay. The first answer to your question is, no, I don't think I have persuasive argument. I emphasize the word persuasive. Removing the word persuasive, I like linkage to the real property tax and the fact that the taxable base of a property has not increased at the same rate as the taxable base of real property, I think is main here, and it's just reflected in the decrease in revenue that we've seen in personal property tax receipts. So I just don't see any compelling reason to change it, and I do see, given the tax application situation, that it is a disproportionate burden on businesses.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. And just so that there's a comment to the contrary to that, I wouldn't support off-the-record increases in the personal property tax, but this is just taking it back to the previous year's level. And my sense is that, you know, that the homeowner's burden of taxes in Tacoma Park has increased, you know, repeatedly, whether that's on a flat tax rate or otherwise. And so I think it's a very modest increase, and it's an increase that just takes us back to last year. So I would agree with Councilmember Grimes if we were going to some much higher revenue level, but I feel like this is a, this is a pretty modest ask.
Yeah. And I think what I pointed out last week was that in the nine years covered in the chart that we had, the real property revenues went up 67% over those nine years, and the business personal property tax, I can't remember whether, over the nine years, whether it remained flat or it went down slightly, but it essentially didn't move. And I think it's reasonable going with the, trying to keep it at the current year revenue levels, and I think that's a good way to go. And it also sends the message to everybody, including future councils, that you don't have to link those rates to the real property tax, and you don't have to link those rates to each other. And I think it's a good way to look at it, and we haven't done that up to this point.
May I just point out that we already don't have a linkage between personal, well, between property taxes and, for instance, income taxes? We haven't even looked at that question. The income tax rates are not set by the city or by, they're not set by the city. So for that matter, if you're looking at the burden on property owners, well, we haven't looked at the burden on, on people who earn income and pay taxes on it. So what I'm saying is that the argument about the burden on one sector versus another increasing at an uneven rate, that one has been incompletely examined, and if you want to make that argument, it would be more convincing if that were completely examined. In any case, I recognize, once again, I think it was Councilmember Siemens a few minutes ago, the word persuasive argument, but I'm not saying that's persuasive one, but it's one that I do believe in, that we haven't looked at that linkage.
Other comments on this area? So we can finish this one and move on. I'll look for indications of support for this or a position to this, so maybe if the clerk will just call a roll, that way we can make sure that we're not ignoring any councilmembers who are participating remotely.
Sure. To support the change.
This would be to support the figures to increase the revenue by $33,576 as proposed in the first page on the salmon sheet.
Okay. Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Aye.
Councilmember Mail?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Okay. So that will be included. And now we will move to the expenditure page, the second page of, under the salmon sheet, which we were talking about earlier. I just wanted to make a comment or two that kind of includes a question. When we were looking at which areas would potentially need additional staffing resources, the one that I wasn't quite clear on, it sounded like the, in the HCD area, that the interim programming would not require any additional, I'm assuming the possible 36 Philadelphia would not require any additional staffing resources. And the one that I kind of had a question on was the lot pre-development activities.
Based on our current projections as far as projects and special revenue funds that we'll be administering for next year, this should, it'll have an impact on staff, as noted in the memo, but it just doesn't show up on here.
Okay. So that we could kind of put ditto marks under the staffing resources needed on the line above for the grant program and say, okay, that does too. Okay. So that, I think that kind of draws the, draws the, I won't say the line, the circle around those items in the way Councilmember Siemens was asking. So the only one of those six, seven items there that, yeah. Sorry. Two of the seven don't require additional staffing, which is the 36 Philadelphia demolition and the Tacoma interim programming. So why don't we take the Tacoma Junction pieces first, and then that will leave us the other remaining pieces. So we'll get the big one out of the way first, and I know Councilmember Grimes wants to comment on those Tacoma Junction items.
Yes, thank you. I have two comments, a small one and a large one. The small one is that the $5,000 for interim Tacoma Junction programming seems overly modest to me. I do realize that some of the programming would generate revenues that would offset expenses. Still, that amount does seem modest. I realize that that amount is one that might facilitate actually spending the money because it's, well, a $5,000 threshold. I don't know if that entered in there. So I don't have a figure in mind, however, so I'm just going to leave it that that seems low. My big comment is that it seems to me premature to spend money, especially anything resembling $200,000, plus the major justification for a full-time planner position on Tacoma Junction streetscape improvement design. The reason that seems premature to me, and I'll mention that I've run this by some of the former members of the Tacoma Junction Task Force, is that the junction is in flux in ways that would mean that we're working too early if we start on streetscape improvement design right now. What I mean in particular is that we do have the sidewalk improvements, well, that's not going to make a major change, but we have the lot interim uses and the start of planning for long-term disposition of the lot. And we also are pending, although it's not a city expenditure, the addition of a crosswalk and the changing of signal timing. Those things will allow us to see whether any kind of roadway reconfiguration is needed. When I say roadway, I mean the actual shape of the road. There are still possibilities on the table where the routing of the road could be changed. The configuration of signals, the way that pedestrians and bicyclists and cars flow through the junction, I think that all of these things, the development, the traffic of various rights could have a potential effect on the kind of streetscape improvement that we actually implement. For that reason, I would suggest, I would propose deferring the streetscape improvement design work by a fiscal year to, for consideration a year from now for FY14. That would be the streetscape improvement design and presumably the major justification against a full-time planner. So that's my comment. Thank you.
City manager have a comment?
I just wanted to note that there is $10,000 already included in the budget for programming, interim programming in Tacoma Junction. I'm not saying whether that $15,000 is sufficient or insufficient, but I didn't want to leave the misimpression that that $5,000 was the only funding that would be in the budget.
Okay.
Councilmember Grimes, does that address your concern?
Yeah.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I just wanted to concur with Councilmember Grimes's comments. I agree with them completely.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. Could I get a little more background on the grant program? I saw it in the narrative, but, so that would, that would work through the Old Tacoma Business Association? How could you explain that to me again? Either city manager or...
The Tacoma Junction, the Tacoma Junction grant program?
Mm-hmm.
As we envisioned it, it would be primarily administered in-house and could be extended, expanded to include leasehold improvements and other infrastructure improvements, if you will, that are not currently eligible activities under the CDPG facade easement program.
So it would be a grant, essentially an RFP, that would go out during the year covering a set of activities and, or an ad hoc program?
No, it would definitely, you'd have to write program guidelines and do all the documents associated with it, and then we put out a notice of availability of funding to see who would be interested in accessing the funds. Our experience has been with programs like this, you have to aggressively market them, otherwise they just, nobody takes advantage of them. And the actual guidelines as far as the program and everything have not been developed at all. So it could be a grant program, it could be a forgivable loan, it could be a deferred loan, any number of different pieces.
Okay, thank you. And did the city manager have anything else you want to add? No? Okay. In terms of the comment on the funding and the streetscape improvement, I guess I'm mindful of the, of the lessons I'm still learning on the sustainable development issue where I think there's a chicken and egg issue, and we really don't, as a council or as a city, have a plan for exactly what we want to see next. We, I don't believe, for example, any, any solution is automatically going to present itself to us about whether we try to facilitate the co-op expanding on the lot, or sell the lot, or create a public-private partnership to develop the lot, or any of those other options. And I think that the benefit of a plan like this, and the other thing I want to add is that we know that the streetscape there is horrible. It is extremely bike-unfriendly, it is extremely unattractive, it's, you know, difficult access for, you know, for bus passengers and pedestrians going to bus stops, it's difficult access for the stores. There are a bunch of really complicated issues going on there. And I personally am happy to, or not am happy, but I'm comfortable saying that unless I have sort of professional guidance, I'm not going to know any more six months from now than I know today about what the right choice is. I personally won't be able to make any more informed decision. And so to me, the value of this sort of study is that we potentially do the sidewalks right, really right, that we're, I think we have fairly strong support for, and we identify some other design elements that would go in there that I hope that I, that I think we've already indicated, we want design elements that are going to be robust to some of, at least some of the potential changes. And I think as a result of an evaluation like this, we would have a much, much better sense of what the, what a smaller subset of the best choices are for the junction in the long term. And so that's why, I mean, I'm inclined to support this because I just, I feel like if we don't, we're going to find ourselves two months away from next year's budget going, well, what do we do now? And I, and I don't, I don't see any other way around that to get, to avoid that problem. Thank you.
To support, you say you're inclined to support this?
Just, I'm sorry, to support the, both the position and the streetscape improvement design study. Although, I mean, those particular numbers, I don't know if those are the right, exactly the right numbers. I'm just trusting staff on the, whether it's 200,000 and 80, or 80 and 160, or, I mean, I don't have an answer to that.
The, just as a, I can't tell if this is on, just as an informational piece, when we spoke with RKK, who does a lot of the streetscape projects and is working on Ethan Allen for us, to give us sort of a ballpark figure, the range was 100 to $300,000. We have 200 here just because it's the middle of the road. And a lot of it will vary in terms of the complexity of the project.
And if you can just, if there's anything that you can do that would help to understand with, kind of, if we, if we said, I'm not sure if this is the right way to phrase it, but if we said, okay, everything under the, under this whole Tacoma Junction area on this sheet, exclusive of the streetscape improvement design, were to happen, would that, I'm assuming that would take adding, one, would require adding a position?
Correct.
And if it was less than that, is there some point, you know, kind of, how do you deal with, okay, if there's pieces of it versus all of it? If, if it's all of those, does that take up the full position? Or adding the streetscape, does that make it like, well, gee, now it really needs to be one and a half? Or no, it doesn't work that way? It falls under something else? It would be consultants, therefore it would be overseeing consultants, and that wouldn't really affect the part, the full time?
Overseeing consultants can be just as time-consuming.
And that's, so that's why I'm trying to kind of understand which, how these pieces, depending on how they're put together, can affect staffing.
The programming that's included in the city manager's current budget without the additional would be appropriately staffed. We would have, with the addition of this part-time management assistant, sufficient staff to manage that workload. By adding any of the additional programs that have been proposed... By adding any of the additional programs that have been proposed for the Tacoma Junction, I will need additional support or have to start taking away programs that are currently ongoing and that frankly are very popular, and in particular with the New Hampshire Avenue. I would really hate to just stop midstream, especially now that some of the projects, the plan, for example, have finally gotten done, and now we can start working on implementation.
I'm going to make the assumption that nobody wants to take those away.
If nobody wants to take those things away, and they want to do something in the Tacoma Junction area, and you want us to do it well, I will need additional support.
Right.
It could be a full-time planner or equivalent as far as a contract position, which frankly I would be more supportive of, given the long-term implications of adding additional staff, that things change in year two or year three, depending upon the funding availability for special revenue projects, things like that.
So, that if it were, assuming for the moment that it was a contract position to deal with all of these pieces, there would be flexibility to add or not the streetscaping oversight?
Correct. If this one person is not going to do all of this stuff, we would totally sit down and regroup and do all of that. But if we were to add the streetscape project and do the pre-development activities for the junction, et cetera, we should be able to do it within one additional, the equivalent of one full-time person. The streetscape project works because we can stagger it with the Ethan Allen streetscape project right now. And frankly, I would strongly encourage you to consider doing the streetscape project. It can be much more than putting in benches or fixing a bumpy road or a sidewalk in front of a, a structure. And the more information we have available for the project, however it ends up being, and we are in a, and we have something that we can present to grantors saying, we can turn this around in 2012 months, the more likely we are to be able to access funding for the actual improvements themselves. I recognize that redevelopment of the city lot is out there. It's going to be several years before we get to a point where anything is being done on that lot. So, there may be a possibility that the design would have to be revised somewhat to accommodate that new development or redevelopment activity, or project improvements that are implemented or installed may have to be ripped out and rebuilt. But you have some flexibility when you're working with a developer to say, okay, you have to restore the street scape in front of you if you tear these things out. So, there are a lot of flexibility. I think that taking on the streetscape project now is doable if we have this additional person. We're going to need them regardless. We're going to need additional staff capacity if you just pick two of the three things that are on, on the list. But by getting that particular project done, it increases your access to additional funding down the road.
Thank you. I think that's helpful. And I haven't necessarily kept track of the lights. I'll check with the City Manager first.
I don't want to confuse the conversation, but I just want to mention that one of the other items that would affect the Housing and Community Development Department is whether or not you choose to expand what we're calling the Mission Serve Program. It wouldn't really be Mission Serve, and we really did not define how that program would be supported, so I think the council should probably finish its discussion regarding the junction, but I did want to just clarify that there's another piece of the HCD workload puzzle that's not related to the junction specifically, and I just didn't want that to get lost.
Okay. And maybe if I can just ask one final piece on what you were just talking about. I'm assuming that in talking about adding, adding funding for a position increases the ability to do all of this, and it doesn't in any way get you stretched beyond kind of your span of control of overseeing all of this from your point of view as a department head?
It should work.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Daniels-Cohen?
Okay, just a couple of questions. You're talking about the grant program. Do the, do the, that's way back.
The Tacoma Junction Grant Program?
Yeah, Tacoma Junction Grant Program. Do the merchants have to match the funds? I think last week we talked about merchants having to match the funds, and that's, it's, I think my listing was, that was a bit of a stumbling block for them. This would be funds that they would get, and it would happen, and they wouldn't have to come up with the same $10,000 from their...
That would be part of the program, the development of the program. What, to make it an effective program, we would have to actually go out and talk to the property owners and the businesses in more detail to find out what the gaps are and what the needs are, what's preventing them from making improvements to their building, what do they need as far as leasehold improvements, things like that. And then, once we have that information, we can craft a program that would actually be beneficial to the group. So, from my perspective, based on past experience, there will be a match requirement, if only to get buy-in on the part of the person.
Right.
To what extent...
It may not be 100%.
It's premature to say.
Okay. And, and when you go talk to the merchants, do you, do you talk to the property owners or to the business owners?
It could be a combination of.
Either, either or.
And depending upon the nature of what the funds were, what types of activities were determined to be eligible, the property owner would have to be involved in the conversation.
Okay. Now, I got, I got confused. It's not, it's not hard. It's easy for me to get confused. The $15,000, that's junction pre-development activities, that is the hole drilling, right? Is that phase one and phase two of the environment, and that's not like having a, a party up, up at the, on the city lot?
No, there is $35,000 already included in the budget for some of those activities. Sarah could cut me from wrong, but the $15,000 would allow for borings and some other work that I did not envision when I put together my budget, if that be correct.
This is the borings?
No. This is in addition to the funding that's already in the budget for the borings.
Okay. Because I also didn't think...
No, 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 I'm sorry, for the environmental assessment.
The environmental assessment, phase one and phase two. Okay. And, yeah. I'm not a boring kind of a person for up there, but, all right, if we have to do it, we have to do it. Is there any way, the $5,000, just to get something rolling now, is there any way that we could partner up, and this may not be a budget question, but I'm going to ask it anyhow, and somebody can throw me out. Do we have to wait for the 5K to budget year 2013? Could we, could we maybe partner up with Old Tacoma Business Association and/or the co-op to see if we could, something started now? A program up there, when I say now, I'm talking, you know, June, July, August, or at least June and July?
It would require a council allocation of funds in the current year budget. Obviously, OTBA is currently without a permanent executive director. I don't know what their, their staffing capacity is.
They may, they may have one by Thursday, I think. I don't know.
I mean, I think Sarah could certainly follow up with them and explore that. I think if, if it would be done under contract, it's more feasible. I don't know that the HCD planning staff could take on any more work at this point in time. Sarah has anything?
She's in pain.
Yeah, it'd be bad. The challenge we have, Kay, is that with the end of the fiscal year being June 30th, right now, we're working, we have deadlines as far as funding for this year's budget with the city, but we also have a lot of grant deadlines, that if we don't get the projects done by June 30th or make certain progress towards those goals, then we run the risk of being at default or losing the funding. So, right now, our energies are focused on our current workload. And I can't speak for OTBA as far as picking up additional things. It would have to go before their board.
Okay. I was just, it was a question from a constituent. I would have been remiss if I didn't ask it, even though I didn't exactly know how. Right.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. As with my colleague, Ms. Daniels-Cohen, I get confused easily. And as we're going through this and dealing with the minutia of the various ways to spend money at Tacoma Junction, I'm trying to remember what money it is that we're spending. And I, I recall our discussion that we did approve the, the changes in taxes and tax rates to end up with an additional $33,576. But I see that the, the total on the reconciliation list in front of us is at a minimum of $477,000. I think the other money that we've talked about possibly spending is from the $750,000 that the City Manager had suggested we might use to pay off some of the, the bond for this building. Is there other money that, that I need to remember as we go through this?
There's also 50.
There's $50,000 that I allocated in the non-departmental budget for council-directed initiatives during the budget process. My, my thought is, given the magnitude of the items, if the council, you know, has specific items tied to that $50,000, I would actually move the funding from the non-departmental budget, transfer it to the appropriate line item, whether that be the library or something else, but...
So, that brings us to $83,000, which leaves us about $390,000 that we have to identify the funds if we wanted to implement all of these things on the reconciliation list.
Correct. And I think, as you indicated, Councilmember Siemens, there has been some discussion about the $750,000 that I had proposed be moved from unreserved to reserved. I, I think, depending on the, the scale of items that the council is talking about, I certainly don't think that you'd be able to do the $750,000 reservation and add all this on top of it, because I think it would, it would drag the unreserved fund balance to a point that would probably give Yvonda and myself a stroke. So, I do think there's some choices here, and those are the councils to make.
And then, I guess the other thing that I would like us to understand, I would certainly like to understand as we're making these decisions tonight, is what the implications are of some of the unknowns at the county and state level. Because I know the mayor had, had talked last week about at least some of that $750,000 might be a good safety net for us if something happened at the county and state level or state level that is going to bring additional expenses to the city for this, for FY13.
It's a little hard to know what's going to happen. I had mentioned that if things went really badly with tax duplication and the county had their, was able to, the county executive was able to convince the county council that they wanted to change their law, we could potentially, in future years, be short $1.7 million. I don't think that's anything we can plan for at this point. I don't think it's anything I want to plan for, and don't think it will come to pass, but that's something that's hanging out there, kind of on the horizon to be dealt with. The, the state, state revenues for police aid are supposed to return in fiscal year 14, but who knows? And the highway user revenues are not projected to return for some undetermined time. And the, and the total for the, for those two that we ended up short were like, I want to say, $558,000, something in that vicinity. So, the, the piece that is the remaining question that's more immediate that we'll have an answer to, but after we have gotten, after we have had first reading of the budget, would be the county reconciliation list that the City Manager talked about earlier this evening, with a potential for anywhere from about $190,000 to $623,000. Does that cover it?
I guess a couple of comments. In regard to state police aid, you know, from my perspective, when I look forward, I don't count on anything being restored that has been so substantially cut. I tend to look at it as what is the likelihood that those funds are coming back? And I think, assuming what the state legislature would do in FY14, from my perspective, would just be total speculation at this point. I don't think there's any doubt that the state is still dealing with a significant structural deficit. You know, in terms of tax duplication, certainly I think the county executive's opinion and his staff is quite clear. You know, to date, we have enjoyed considerable support from the county council. I think we'll have a better idea of where that issue might end up. The county council, especially the GO committee, has already asked their staff to schedule a discussion of tax duplication. The report has been filed, and they particularly expressed interest in talking about the Tacoma Park Police MOU. And I envision that those discussions would probably take place this fall. They seem quite anxious to have that issue resolved. I think the other piece that's kind of hanging out there is we, FY13 will be the third year in the reassessment cycle, so we will be going through reassessment that would impact the FY14 budget. Am I correct? Let's get my years mixed up. So, I, I think certainly there's a number of, of pieces in play.
Okay, but it sounds like most of those are more of a worry for FY14 than FY13?
That would be my guess at this point. You know, I, I've talked to some of the county staff about their budget, and, you know, right now, they don't seem to be exhibiting that much concern about what the state legislature might do. I mean, I think a lot of the damage has probably already been done to the counties. But I think we can certainly watch that play out. I think, obviously, as Mayor Williams mentioned, a special session will be done very shortly. And certainly, the council, you know, if anything were to happen, as we had to do, I believe it was in FY10, we came back within probably two months, three months of basically the council adopting the budget and had to basically restructure based on some pretty significant hits that we took in revenues.
I certainly wouldn't want the county or the state to get the misimpression that we have, you know, lots of money that we can just help to solve their problems with. But I, I think we also need to, since, you know, there are some choices we're making tonight, we also keep in mind that things might not go as we, as we hoped for anyways. Sorry for the tangent, but I think it's important for us to think about that.
Councilmember Schultz?
My feeling is, is that we're doing an awful lot of speculating up here as to what the state and the county might do with all these various categories of potential funding. And just in, just as a value, I think when there's just so many unknowns, that our responsibility here is to be very conservative and cautious. And that if they, these unknowns or these things we're speculating about come to pass and work in our favor, then, okay, then we can come back and revisit some of this stuff later on this summer, or whenever we get some ideas of what is actually going to be happening. But I, I'm not comfortable sort of saying, or I'm not comfortable doing it any other For example, I mentioned this last week in my comments, I think we can pretty well expect that the State Health Care Commission is going to render a verdict sometime in 2000, calendar, this calendar year, or certainly in the next fiscal year. And while that decision isn't going to cost us any money, when that decision is handed down, if, unless I'm naive, I would assume that that event is going to be very material to the city and its planning staff, because however it goes, I think, you know, we're going to have to deal with it. And that means moving that thing up the chart of priorities real fast from something that's been sort of hanging out there to something that becomes, you know, kind of immediate. We're just not going to be able to say, well, we don't, we, you know, we don't have the staff to deal with the, with the state's decision, so therefore, we're just not going to deal with it. So, I'm, I'm concerned about that happening and that sort of forcing us to shift, our, our staff being forced to shift its priorities of what, what its work is. With regard to the idea for this proposed grant program, we're just talking at this point in a conceptual way, but it seems to me that that grant program is only going to be able to... to be able to be directed, talking to, in terms of the Tacoma Junction, to a fairly finite number of businesses there. I mean, let's face it, there's only so many businesses in Tacoma Junction. And when you're talking about interior improvements, you're, of course, talking to the business, you have to talk to the business owner. And, you know, if it's a grant program, business owners are going to say, well, sure, I'll be happy to take the money and redecorate and do all that. But when it becomes a match, then the game changes. And all of a sudden, they say, well, I only have another 24 months on my lease. I'm not sure I want to put up all that kind of money to renovate my store if I don't get my lease renewed. And so then you're in a three-way conversation with the landlord. And landlords are all different. Creating a grant program from scratch is an enormous use of staff time, because you've got to first assess the need out there, and then you just go through this whole process of doing, trying to design this in a way that will be responsive. And then, as Dane said, you have to market it, and you have to explain it. And then, if people actually like it, then you're in real trouble, because then you have to actually start either making loans or grants. And all of a sudden, you've become a little bit of a miniature bank. Now, I just think that for the $30,000 that we're talking here, that it's a ton of work that you're going to have to do, whether it's a $30,000 grant program or a $300,000 grant program. It's still the same amount of work to get it set up. So I don't really think that it's going to be a useful use of staff's time for that small amount of money. On the other hand, I wanted to comment that Councilmember Mail's expression of frustration of wanting to get things going so that we don't spend another year not knowing where we're headed. And in that sense, I think the only way to do that, you know, is to, is to hire staff to start, to be present, so that there's somebody there full-time who can actually think about and focus on what the possible issues are, just like we've used staff planners for several years to work on the New Hampshire corridor project. And that's been a long, long process for many years. It's, $80,000 is a lot of money, but if you hire somebody, you have to keep in mind, well, you're not going to hire them for just one year. You're going, they're going to become part of the, part of the furniture here for each forthcoming year, so that becomes a long-term commitment. But I, you know, and if we have the money to do it, you know, I'd be, I'd support that. But if we don't, then, you know, we're talking about coming up with some more income, or have to raise taxes, and I, you know, I don't want to do that. So I'm not sure how to do that. I just, on the other, and finally, I would just add on the, the street scape improvement thing, I'll say what I said last week. I just think that anytime you start spending money on hard improvements before you've gotten down and studied the basic elements of the land use redevelopment potentials for the city lot and the traffic engineering issues for traffic, any money spent beyond the ADA improvements, I think, runs a high risk of just being either a waste of money or becoming a fixed situation that, that will limit our flexibility and opportunities for creative solutions, either traffic engineering, pedestrian engineering, or redevelopment possibilities. I just think it would be premature to do that kind of, spend that $80,000, excuse me, $200,000. I think that should wait for another year.
I just, before I go to the next council member, I just want to double-check back with Ms. Daines. I thought I heard you say that it wouldn't necessarily involve bringing on a full-time staff member, but for the, for the year for adding the capacity, you might contract.
That's an option that the city manager and I have chatted about.
So it might be possible to do this without kind of committing to out-years and pardon the manager?
But yeah, but then, then you, then at the end of the year, the contract, whenever the contract is up, what do you do? You have to go out and hire another contractor to continue the work, or do you then hire a full-time planner to implement? Because if you don't, then there's nobody to implement what the contractor's recommended. So I think either what you're doing is a question of when you start the process, would we do it this year or next year? But the long-term planning for the, for the Tacoma Junction is going to be like the long-term planning for the New Hampshire area, is that it's a, it's a, we start now or later, but it's a long-term commitment. Hiring a contractor to start it, fine, but sooner or later, I mean, it's just, this is going to be an expense going forward, whether it's paid out to an independent party or paid to somebody under, on our payroll.
Okay. I'm going to go next to Councilmember Mail, and then I'm going to give Councilmember Grimes a chance to jump back in.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to address a little bit of the issue of finances and risk and sort of predictions. I mean, I guess the thing that I'm trying to keep in mind is that it looks to me like, even if we were to fund all of the things on this list, it would still leave us money to put into the, you know, $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 into the reservation for money for the community center bond. And that's on top of a $1.2 million early redemption of an additional bond. And I think that part is really important, because when I, when I'm supportive of changes like the ones on this list, it's because I know that we're also making a choice, you know, we borrowed money a number of years ago to pay off a pension liability, and we made a deal at that time with the residents of the city that we would be paying off this bond for many years in the future. But we're now in a good enough space that we think we're going to be able to pay off $1.2 million early. And I guess I would ask the city manager, you know, so for example, if the state budget or the county budget, you know, work out adversely, we're going to know that in the next few weeks or month, two months. We're probably going to know that before we pay $1.2 million off in a, in a bond, which is sort of an optional payment. Is that right? Okay. So I feel like, in terms of being conservative, we have built into our budget quite a bit of cushion in that we are paying off debt, in two debts, potentially one in full, one impartially. And that's, that to me gives me the cushion that makes me more comfortable with, with these expenses. In terms of the detail added about a contract versus a full-time position, I think Councilmember Schultz is right that this would, if it was done as a contract, we would probably need more contract help next year or maybe three years. But I do think that, well, I hope that the work would be finite, that two or three years would be, would be the end of the project, that there would be a tailing off over that period of time. For example, the grant programs, the facade work, this, the sidewalk work, those things all have a finite life. The redevelopment of the city lot and potentially the changing of the traffic configuration might be more like five-year projects, but those are, while one might be entirely the state's burden, or largely the state's burden, and I guess the other is a little bit more unpredictable for me. So I'm supportive of the, of the contract approach. But I just wanted to add that in terms of what I, what I feel like is, you know, we have, we have quite a bit of a, we have room in the budget, even if we spend these things, to still go back and not have to worry about raising taxes if something does happen at this, at the county or the state level. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes, I want to give you a chance to weigh in. If now is not the time, you've got to reserve a spot.
Thank you. I don't have any further comments. I'll just reiterate, I, despite what Ms. Daines said, I don't see a compelling reason to move forward with the streetscaping, and I do see negatives to doing that. Streetscaping is more than just aesthetics, but it's really icing on the cake if we're talking about planting and park benches. And I, it just strikes me as a, the potential for waste if we have to rip something out, whether we pay for it or whether a developer pays for it. That just is off-putting to me, so I will reiterate that I would defer the streetscaping. Whether staff needs to be hired on a full-time, part-time, or some other basis, to me is a different question. I think that we should have the staff necessary to carry out the programming that we move forward with, but for the third time, staff programming for the coming fiscal year, I would not include the streetscaping for Tacoma Junction.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I too, despite what Seth said on the earlier comment, I find him persuasive in this case on deferring the street scape and planner, as outlined by Seth earlier, in favor of deferring those. I'm kind of lukewarm on the Tacoma Junction grant program. I'm much more in favor of a grant program for all the commercial areas in Tacoma Park, not restricted to Tacoma Junction. I think we have a number of commercial areas that could use that kind of support. And as Councilmember Schultz was outlining, it's a fairly lengthy process to set this up and run it, so I'd like to see it, you know, done for all the commercial areas. And lastly, I would like to say I am in favor of the interim Tacoma Junction programming and the lot pre-development activities.
Okay, and I'll just add a thought that one way I see of kind of looking at some of the uncertainties and the timing of doing something like going forward with the street scape improvement design is to say, not to include it in the FY13 budget, but to put it on a list of things to consider, say, in January, when we might know more of what's going on, have a little bit more certainty, and we might lose six months, but we might then be able to jump into it if it seems appropriate at that point. I think what we probably need to do at this point is, I'll check on, I'm thinking what we need to do is get a sense on these, on these Tacoma Junction items, recognizing that we haven't talked about the expansion of Mission Serve program yet, but I'm looking for a suggestion from the city manager or Ms. Daines about whether we should take, look at that in terms of the possible impact on staffing, so we're looking at it all at once, or take these other ones and then go to the Mission Serve next.
I guess my preference would be that the council have some discussion about the Mission Serve program, so that Sarah and I maybe have a better sense of what might be going forward, and then if we could take a break after that discussion, so Sarah and I have an opportunity to sort of talk a little bit about some of the council discussions so far, so we can, in answer to Councilmember Siemens's inquiry, maybe refine what staffing resources might be needed.
Okay. All right. So if we can just get a little bit more information on expansion of the Mission Serve program, and frankly, at this point, if somebody came up to me and said, tell me, what is this Mission Serve program? I'd say, I don't remember. I don't have the foggiest.
Well, I will not tell those 350 volunteers that are coming up next week, but...
Glad you joined Councilmember Daniels, Cohen, and me in the confuse category.
Yeah, but I will not use that word about myself.
Mission Serve is the name of a project that is currently in the works, that will be, that the council has approved Community Development Block Grant Funds for. And it begins July 1st and runs through July 5th, I believe, where 350 volunteers from across the country will be coming in and making a variety of improvements to income-qualified homeowners' properties.
It's the name.
And I know it. The name is kind of confusing. One of the things that the council, I believe it was, there were a number of council members who had suggested that they would like to see that continued, and so we've included funding in the budget for, it's a wide range, because it depends largely on whether or not it's something that could be done with volunteers, like the Mission Serve program is proposed, or if it would be something where we would have to hire contractors to come out, to do.
And do we have reason to believe that we would need to go beyond the volunteer methodology?
Lead paint has a lot to do with that.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
That makes it clear to me.
Yeah, it clears it up really quickly. For those of you who are not familiar with the state of Maryland's lead paint, no, it's Lead Risk Reduction, Lead Prevention. It's, has always been fairly complicated and restrictive, and it has become even more restrictive in the last five months in terms of work that can be done on properties that have the potential for lead contained within the paint itself. And in dealing with volunteers, that's problematic, because there are training requirements or certification requirements. You have to suit up and do all sorts of fun and exciting stuff. So that's why you see such a range.
Councilmember Schultz.
Let me put it, ask the question in the other way. That is, if we didn't fund any money for Mission Serve, what would happen?
We would continue to refer property owners over to Rebuilding Together to determine whether or not they would be a good fit and see how that goes. One of the options we have with this particular line item, when we were chatting about it internally, was this might be something that if the council decided to proceed with it, we could speak with Rebuilding Together or a similar type of organization to see if they would like to handle it, similar to what we do with Old Tacoma Business Association or the Crossroads Food Network in, with the market.
And just act as a funnel, funnel the money to them who already know how to...
Yes.
...to use it.
Councilmember Daniels, go.
Actually, I remember, we talked about this last week. Similar, I'm going to, it's similar to Habitat for Humanity, but it's on a smaller scale, isn't it? I mean, they don't go back and rebuild the whole house, it's just fixing things that a homeowner doesn't have the...
The concept is very similar.
Similar. And, and we wanted to increase it from $32,000 to $80,000, because it increases the number of people that could be served by how many?
I left my file with all my numbers upstairs. I was hoping you wouldn't ask me that question.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Frankly, I do not remember. I believe it was about 20 to 30 households were you talking about?
Yeah.
What we, we had the estimated cost per house vary depending on whether we used volunteers or contractors. The figures we had provided last week was a $2,000 per house cost...
Right.
...if we were using volunteers and $5,000 if we were using contractors.
Okay.
And I think, Sarah, you said, you estimated probably about 16 households might qualify if it was income-qualified.
Right. Correct.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. I would be happy to support the full amount here, and it's because I see, there are a number of trends going on in Tacoma Park, but with regard to, in particular, our older homeowners who still live in their own homes and want to stay in their own homes, we have a problem with regard to the tax, the property tax burden that they perceive they have to pay, so it becomes expensive, even if they may have paid off their mortgage already. And then the second issue is that maintenance becomes a real problem, and we know that from code enforcement, the actions that we have ongoing, and we know it just from looking around the state of our neighborhoods. And this is a program that is perfectly served, appropriately named, to, to help people like that. And that's really a niche that I think, that I would be proud of as a community to try to keep going, to try to expand, and to try to, try to, you know, make sure we're helping, you know, really just a few more families. We have the challenges in terms of program implementation and whether, as Ms. Daines said, we, you know, bring it in-house, whether we're using volunteers, whether we're just passing money through. And I personally would like the option of passing the money through to some group that has the confidence to do it. But, but that aside, you know, I support putting, putting money into this, because I just think that, that the opportunity for us to try to help residents stay here in their homes as long as possible is one we should, we should try to meet. Thank you.
So maybe just a quick sense on the Mission Serve that might, the city manager and Ms. Daines, in trying to have that conversation, maybe just get a sense of whether people want to include expansion of Mission Serve program and at what level? So maybe if we can, I just... So maybe if we can, I just go down the line and would just get a sense of whether you want to do something and whether it's minimum, maximum, that might be helpful. I'll start with Councilmember Grimes.
I would include it, I would support it at the full level.
Okay, Councilmember Mail.
Same.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
I'd support it at the full level.
Councilmember Snipper.
At the full level.
I'll just go right down the line in turn, and I'll get to me, and I'll say include at the minimum level. Councilmember Siemens.
I was gonna say at the minimum level.
Councilmember Schultz.
Likewise, at the lower end.
So we had everybody saying include, and we had four say at the maximum level, and three say at the minimum level.
Excuse my interrupting, I'm going to be dropping off the call now.
Okay, thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Grimes is off the call. So is this the right time where you want to take a short break, and then we'll come back and try and make sense out of the HCD pieces, and then do the other pieces, and be finished with this? So we'll take a short break.
There's one minute left in the game, the Capitals are winning two to one.
Thank you, Terry! Thank you, thank you!
At least most of us. Councilmember Siemens is off crying in his, in his, in his water over a two-two tie.
Crying?
Yep.
What's he crying about?
It's a two-two tie.
Well, so what?
Well, he's crying.
Don't make a game.
Ms. Matthews.
Eyes, eyes, and come on out.
Based on, I think, what we've heard so far, and I guess I just want to recap and preface my comments, what I believe Sarah and I have heard is there is definite interest on the part of the council regarding a Mission Serve-like program. There are differences of opinion about what funding level. For the purpose of tonight's discussion and staffing resources that may be needed in HCD, our assumption is that we will be able to identify Rebuilding Together or some similar type of entity that we can just have the program managed under contract. My sense is that there's interest in the part of the council on Tacoma Junction, additional funding for Tacoma Junction programming. Once again, our assumption has been that we can find someone to do that under contract. There does not appear to be support for the grant program based on what we, we've heard. There is support for the predevelopment activities, and that the streetscape improvement design does not seem to be supported. I guess before I go on, has the staff accurately assessed or captured kind of the council's thoughts?
Councilmember Siemens, we, we were just making sure that the sense of the council got captured correctly, that going forward with the Mission Serve program at some funding level, not with the grant program, and going forward with the predevelopment activities, not with the streetscape improvements design. Does that sound right to you? I know that Councilmember Grimes was not in favor of streetscape, Councilmember Schultz was not. I was happy to kind of punt that one to potentially January to reconsider. Councilmember Mail wants to go forward. Let me just check with the other folks. Councilmember Snipper, no.
I'm abstaining.
You're not allowed.
I'm abstaining.
That was four.
Yeah, that's four.
You've got your four.
There were, there were four who did not want to go forward at this time with streetscape.
Okay, I agree.
Okay, five.
And Councilmember Siemens, the other comment I had made, you know, prefacing my remarks about staffing resources is that we would be successful in identifying someone to handle the Mission Serve-like program that we would contract with an entity to manage that. So if I've accurately captured where the council is at, one of the things that Sarah and I talked about is that the HCD staff will have some involvement in the expansion of the bike share program into Montgomery County and into the city. It's more of a coordinating role and just making sure our interests are protected. But if that is the work plan that the council envisions for the staff for FY13, what I would ask the council to do is to approve the increased hours for intern assistants and to up that number from 17,000, this is an additional 17.5, to an additional 25,000.
But before you go further, I just, the grant program, I was not clear that we were not supportive of that program.
Okay, then that, that might
And I think, I commented on it, but my comment was still, I'm still in support, I just wanted more information about it, and I don't know, I didn't get a sense from the rest of council whether there were, I think Councilmember Grimes did not express an opinion on the grant program.
He did not. Because obviously there would be, as Councilmember Schultz alluded to, considerable work in setting up a grant program, so if I misunderstood where the council was at, Sarah and I will need to
Run down that one real quick. Since, since Councilmember Grimes is not on the phone anymore, we can just kind of do a show of hands for who wants to do it and who doesn't. So who, who wants to go forward with the, with the proposed, where'd it go, 30,000 in grant program funding for the junction? That's two. Let me just say that I would be more supportive if it was for more areas than the junction.
Yeah, that was my point.
Which
Is that possible, or because it's, it's, it is written on this piece of paper, it has to be just the junction? Can it be any
Well, we have some CDBG funding, I mean, for a somewhat similar program that's citywide, though, Sarah, you want to?
The CDBG facade easement program is
More limited.
Eligible for any, for all of the commercial areas in Tacoma Park with the exception of Old Town and the Eastern Avenue Gateway. There are two small areas where it's not CDBG eligible.
But the junction is at this time.
The junction is Arian, Arian Flower, Flower and Piney Branch, one side of University, the Holton Lane, not the other side of University.
Maple Avenue.
Maple Avenue is included in that.
But that's mostly facade stuff.
It's only facades, and it's only an easement, and there is a dollar-for-dollar match, and it's a maximum of $10,000.
Pause.
There is the possibility, we don't know, but we might get funding from community legacy, because I know that the governor had proposed originally that that community legacy be doubled in his proposed budget, I don't know if that's where it still is.
Yeah. There is always the possibility of accessing additional resources with the community legacy program. Our experience of recent rounds is that they favor Main Street areas. So once the applications became available, we could apply for funding for a specific property or the continuation of the improvement program that was started up in Old Tacoma a couple of years ago that is recapitalized but doesn't have a lot of funding in it right now. So the community legacy is an option that would apply to the Tacoma Junction and Old Town. We have submitted requests in the past for the entire community, but they always bump out everybody else, they don't include those areas that are outside of Main Street areas.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
I would have included Columbia Avenue wooded cleanup in the junction because that is part of the junction. I, is, is it not? I include it.
But it's public works.
It's public works, and these are all listed as essentially affecting separate budgets.
Mm-hmm. So it's, it's
My assumption is that the council, after we discuss sort of what would impact HCD, so we can define the staffing resources, is that then you would then go back and go, kind of give a straw poll on each and every item that remains.
Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to remind the council that when the Tacoma Junction Task Force made their presentation to us, we variously called it one of the best task force reports we've ever received. The task force goes forward and details many, many recommendations, most of which are not, never even made it to our budget discussions, but we're now proposing to take away many of the others, many of the highest priority items that they had on the list. So demonstrate the city's seriousness by establishing a five-year plan with dedicated staff. Optimize pedestrian and traffic flow, working with SHA to install a new crosswalk, and SHA to deal with street and traffic flow as soon as possible and during normal traffic conditions, work with SHA to gather baseline traffic and pedestrian data. Diversify the function of the city-owned parking lot, restructure the lot, close one entrance. Maintain the number of parking spaces. Build a pavilion, organize dances, food trucks, craft fairs, vendors. Signal in visible dramatic ways that the city, businesses, and property owners are investing in making the junction more vibrant. Complete a Phase II streetscape project along the south side of Carroll Avenue, upgrade Columbia Avenue's sidewalk, facade improvements. Complete the necessary work to prepare for harmonious, successful redevelopment of the city-owned parcel, and pedal hard toward a more bike-friendly community. And I'm sorry to go through all these details, but, you know, I just think that we're getting down to testing to figure out if the city lot is a superfund site, and new sidewalks, and $15,000 for facade improvement, and $2,000 to clean up trash from the back of the lot. And I would be surprised if people weren't disappointed in that as a first-year action plan. Thank you.
And doing sidewalks and, working with SHA on crosswalk?
Crosswalk, putting in crossing guards. It's not to say there isn't community legacy and block grant money available for Tacoma Junction, because there is, so that's not like there's a overweight there. We're doing the ADA improvements to the sidewalks. One question I have is the, what was your comment, I didn't recall, on the full-time planner position?
Well, what Sarah and I talked about, and obviously, we're trying to listen to the discussion and refine where the council is going, because staffing resources and where you want to go are inextricably linked. Based on what we believed we had heard, we could accommodate those activities, and clearly there's some differences of opinion, if Sarah's budget received additional funding for some intern assistance. Listed on the sheet as one reconciliation item was a figure of 17,500. If there is no additional full-time staffing, what I would ask is that 17.5 be increased to 25,000, which would allow Sarah and her staff to basically have some resources to rely upon going forward. And we think if the work program is what I understood, that should be sufficient. Clearly, if there are other items or those items that the council previously discussed are not enough, then basically intern hours would probably not cut it.
Can I talk now? My little wife has been so patient with me.
Okay, but I want, I want to first see if there's a sense of an answer to Councilmember Schultz's question about why not just go with the planner and not the intern.
From my perspective, one of the advantages of working with interns, and we've been very fortunate for the last many, many years in terms of getting high-quality interns, is that we can structure the internship to meet the needs that we have at that particular time. So if we have needs for architectural design or mapping services and things like that, we then promote the internship in that way so we can get that skill set to match up with it. Then when the internship is done, we go back and revisit it so that whatever, the type of internship that we're offering matches the programming that we've got available in place, rather than hiring on a long-term basis an individual with possibly a set, set of skills that may or may not mirror what we need at that particular time. It's worked so far. As soon as I say it out loud, it will not work any longer, but
In, in the proposed budget, I remember there was a shift from some hours that was, it involved internship hours, and you were either moving toward more intern hours or lesser intern hours.
Sarah's looking confused. If you go back in prior years, Mayor Williams, we had, can we back up?
Oh, was that in the full-time equivalency?
You're thinking about the FTEs.
Okay.
Prior to FY11, we had some intern hours, and we had two part-time planning staff, non-benefited positions. As part of the restructuring, financial restructuring in FY11, we eliminated one of those positions. When the remaining part-time planner left for another job, I guess it was actually this fiscal year, we started using an intern. And because an intern makes less than what the, the part-time staff did, it bumped up the FTEs. So the dollar amount really hasn't changed, but the FTEs changed.
So that increasing the intern hours would be consistent with what was already happening in the existing staffing?
We, this is, this would be in addition to what is already in the budget, yes.
Right, but it, but it's, it's the same
It adds up, yes, same direction.
Okay. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, everyone who spoke last week during citizen comments about the junction, everyone to a person said they asked for a five-year plan. Everyone asked for that plan, and, and Councilmember Mail brought that up also. And one of the reasons I, I'm talking about, let's do the $5,000 now, I, I hear what the issues are, but as soon as possible, is to get something going on, on the land, on top of the land, so that, so that it looks like there's things actually going to happen there. And that's, that's, that's why I asked for, you know, what part of it you said was activities, a dance, whatever the activity is, just to get people to come there, to, to, to the city lot, and, and enjoy, and know that they can walk there, and that it's a warm and toasty place for them, a friendly place. So I just, I don't know what it looks like to make a five-year plan, I don't know if it takes an intern or a city planner, but that's what, you know, that's what they, everyone asked for, and I, we would be a little remiss if we ignored that request.
I'm just thinking about the streetscape improvements design, wanting to commit to looking at that again in January. And I guess does, does going, does getting back to the grant program, does that really significantly change anything if we did it or we didn't do it?
You may recall you may recall when we presented our initial budget for the department, that we chatted about some of the facade easement projects that were pending for the Tacoma Junction area. And right now, we have an application in place that would impact five, five storefronts. So if you're looking for something that will have a So if you're looking for something that will have a visual impact, that will look like something is going on, that has that potential. I'm not saying it will be full-tilt boogies, facade restoration, some of them that could be just a sign or a window replacement, but there are, there will be some activity going on in the junction area. As far as the Streetscape project is concerned, if you are interested in looking at doing a multi-year program, that would facilitate it. If you're also looking at ways of reducing the impact on the budget for the junction, moving it out until after the first of the year would reduce the costs associated with
So let me see if I have a list that accurately reflects where we are at the moment on the items labeled HCD in the first column. My sense is that we have said yes to the 36 Philadelphia demolition, yes to Mission Serve...
At 80,000.
At 80. Yes to interim programming, no to the grant program, yes to the lot pre-development activities, no to the full-time planner, yes to the increased intern hours at 25. No, and then down in the capital outlay, no to the Streetscape improvement design with the idea that we revisit it in January. And I think that covers all of the HCD and HCD-related items. Is that an accurate reflection of where we are? It's not necessarily where we all want to be, but where we are.
We have a question.
Yes. Councilmember Schultz.
$25,000 for the intern, how many hours does that, how much of a person are we getting?
It's a little shy of one and a half FTEs.
A little shy of one and a half FTEs for 25,000? So it's one and a half interns. Am I confusing you?
My math is... No, I'm just tired and I haven't eaten, so...
Sorry about that.
Just give me one moment, Councilmember Schultz, I can probably answer your question. FTEs are obviously calculated as a function of 2080 hours. We currently have $17,500 that was included for interns in my proposed budget. That's equivalent to 0.5 FTEs.
0.5.
Right.
So we would be adding 0.75.
Yeah, mostly half, yeah.
That's closer than I thought.
Only half off, double off. So it would take the interns to 1.25 FTEs at 25,000 total. The combination of this 25 and the 17.5 that was already in the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, so you're adding 25 to the 7.
No, no, there was 17.5 in the city manager's proposed budget, and the additional in reconciliation would be to add 25,000. Right?
It's an additional 25,000.
So we end up then with a total of...
42.5.
Right.
42.5, which is then the equivalent of...
It's just shy in total, are you talking about just the 25,000, Councilmember Schultz?
No, the 42,500.
It's just shy of 1.25. Marginally shy of that.
So by that way, we're getting more than a full-time human being. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so does that accurately reflect where we are on reconciliation on those items? And I think, okay. Then we have additional ones to do. Let's take the bottom of the list and then we'll go back up to the top. So the Columbia Avenue wooded lot cleanup at 2,000. How many in favor of that? Okay. That's in. The recycling cart pilot program at 8,000. Hands in favor, hands in favor? Hands in favor? I see one hand. The emergency assistance program expansion, at a low of 20 and a high of 25? 25? Okay.
This is structural engineer.
Oh, sorry. Retention of structural engineer for the community center floor closing at 10,000. Okay. That's in. Now we're at the top of the list, and these are a combination of library and recreation department items. Purchase of books, I'll take it at the high of 10. I see three. Four, okay. So that's in. Sunday hours, 12 to 5, at 15,000 and change. I see two. I see two. Okay.
Is that a no?
That's a no.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
And then that knocks out recreation Sunday hours, 12 to 5. Library noon opening, a computer learning center, five. Recreation teen programming, five.
Mayor Williams, would it be possible for the council to discuss the proposed allocation of $15,000 to have, to provide some assistance to the city clerk's office? I know this was a question, but...
Oh, right, right.
Can we go back to one teen thing first?
Sure.
See, I have my little light on. Is it possible to revisit the Sunday hours for the library and recreation in January? Like, is that a possibility or...
It's up to the council.
It's up to the council?
Yep, certainly your call.
And it would, we could only revisit it in January? We couldn't revisit it in September or...
You can really, it's really up to the council. Councilmember Daniels coming, you can revisit that whenever you would like. The only thing I would just say to the council is that once you, if you were to make a decision to do this, there's probably about a three-month lead time in terms of recruitment and things of that nature before it could go into effect.
And is it possible, I know we've got the community center open, is it possible that we could program, since it's open, programs, program it for some programs or, you know, on a contractual basis, not on a staff, that's also up to the council?
If the council were to decide to open the building on Sunday?
Right.
We could certainly explore programming if, you know, obviously provided the front desk was staffed, I think as the recreation director had indicated, and I think our past experience has been, is typically Sunday is a very slow day. But certainly that we could explore whatever options the council would like.
I'm kind of a build-it-and-they-will-come person, so... I just never noticed Sunday, I've been in the business for years in physical education and recreation, that Sunday was never a slow day in my life. Maybe here at Tacoma Park, but it was never a slow day. It was always a workday.
Yeah, I think what I have seen is if you have recreation facilities that are more expansive, you have gym facilities, you have an aquatic center, and I've worked in cities that have those, those are obviously very busy times, but typically just meetings and things like that, it, in my experience, has not proven to be a very busy day. But every place is different.
Because there were Sunday hours for a while.
Yeah, a long time. No, until last year.
We eliminated them in FY11, and part of the reason for doing that was not just, you know, cost reduction reasons, that was an element of it, but we just had not been seeing in the five, four to five years the community center had been open at that point. We just really did not see much utilization.
Okay, so I think we're down to the request for some, what was it, 15,000?
It was 15,000.
For some part-time help for the clerk's office.
It would be part-time assistant, a non-benefit position.
Any comments, discussion? Councilmember Daniels coming, is that an old light?
That's an old light.
Councilmember Snipper.
No, I'm voting in favor.
I mean, it's kind of a little bit easy here, isn't it, a little bit?
You just have to stare down the city clerk.
Can I borrow them occasionally?
So...
Read the minutes if you vote in a long way.
All those in favor of the 15,000? That gets a unanimous vote. Have we missed anything? Is there anything unclear?
The only item that I think I still need direction on is the reservation of funds towards 2005 bond issue. Once again, it doesn't affect the bottom line of FY13, but as some of you may recall, there is a general fund, fund balance projection that is provided as part of the supporting documentation for the adoption of the budget ordinances. If the council is not comfortable reserving those funds, what you will just simply see after we account for these items that you've added this evening, will just be a higher unreserved fund balance.
Thoughts on that? I'm happy with a higher unreserved fund balance, and that gives us a little more flexibility in January to take up some of the things and think about them when we see what else has come in with county and state difficulties or lack thereof.
I'm happy to support that.
So those in support of that, for hands? Okay, that's unanimous, we'll leave it unreserved.
Councilmember Snipper, when you're no longer Councilmember Snipper and you email me from Rome, I don't ever want to hear anything about the unreserved fund balance being too high. You got to promise me that.
I will absolutely promise you that.
Thank you.
I might direct the, you know, new council member.
There you go.
Okay, so I think that finishes reconciliation.
Yes, it does.
And we have a...
You're not reconciled?
I'm not reconciled.
That will be a lifelong condition.
I want my Sunday hours from the library, so I'll figure out a way.
And the reason I say January is, it's generally been the case that we wanted to see how, you know, kind of let things settle out a little bit and not start making changes too early in the fiscal year. But given what we're trying to see what's going to happen, in some ways, it can be a little bit different conditions than the usual about waiting to January. So if it makes sense to take it up sooner than January, we can do that.
Because, you know, when you go to Sunday hours for a library, January would be, you know, December, January would be a great time because it's indoor hours at that point. It'd be horrible to have to wait until spring. So I'll figure out a way, and maybe we can figure out a way to build some kind of a barricade so people could still get out the back door and not get into the rest of it.
We'll just recruit a council member who really wants this, who promises to stand there.
I can stay there.
All the hours every week.
Are we adjourned?
We are adjourned.
Yes.
Thank you for asking.